I'd like to call the November meeting of the Rockland Community College Board of Trustees to order. The time is 6:06. Secretary, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Martin Wharton, that's it.
Here.
Trustee Mary Lou Dilley.
Here.
Trustee Van Valens, that's it. Trustee Mary Ellen Deish.
Here.
Trustee Eliot Eckert. Trustee Susan Oker Ramos.
Here.
Trustee Joseph Ray.
Here.
Trustee Mendel Taub.
Here.
Trustee Richard Roy.
Here.
Trustee Fatima Ruth.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. This is the public comment section of the meeting, and it looks like we have five people that want to speak to the board. Just remind them to please try to limit your comments to three minutes each. First is Melanie Ree.
Ree.
Ree. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Melanie Ree. I am the Chair of the Science Department and President of the Faculty Senate. I'm here to speak to you tonight regarding the resolution of the ability for the board to vote on tonight to go under lease for the Culinary Arts Center in NIAC. As the Faculty Senate President, I thought it was important that I come forward to express the concerns not only of the Senate but of the college community as a whole and as a faculty member at this institution. I feel that there are several concerns that the board may or may not be aware of, and they need to hear them prior to voting on a resolution in hand. The first would be that the proposed facility that was brought to the faculty, this is going back at least eighteen months ago, in no way mirrors what is being voted on tonight. The space is different, the setup of the space is different, and the proposed vision for the space is radically different. So in my opinion, this has not been properly vetted across the campus. The faculty are completely unaware, and still many of them are, as to what this space is really meant to do and what's purpose it's supposed to serve. The second is the cost of the facility. The initial build-out costs are quite high, and I had spoken at a meeting prior to this where it was stated that the cost of construction would be built into the lease agreement. I feel this is absolutely ridiculous. There will be overage on the construction that the lease agreement does not account for. We all know that when we're doing construction on our homes, it's a minimum of twenty percent above budget. Is that being accounted for in this resolution that you're signing? And if not, where is the capital coming to pay for the overage? The lack of faculty involvement in this process has been astounding. This is supposed to be a program that's going to serve students. However, the Chair of our Culinary Arts Program was minimally, at best, involved in this process, which I find absurd. The enrollment concerns. The enrollment concerns are real. I believe that the projections for enrollment at this site are unrealistic at best, and I believe that the board is perhaps not getting the correct enrollment figures that are connected to this site. And last but not least would be the classroom space concerns. The current proposed site has inadequate classroom space to properly run the classes that would be required to complete this program. There's no way possible that the three to five classrooms that are available could accommodate the general ed courses that need to be offered there for the students to finish their degree. I urge the board, please, to act responsibly and in the best interest of the college and its students when considering voting on this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elizabeth Fuller.
I'm Elizabeth Fuller, Professor in the Science Department and also a member of the Faculty Senate Executive Committee. I'm here to encourage the Board of Trustees to vote against the resolution that's currently proposed to move forward with developing the Culinary Arts Institute in NIAC. During the last academic year, senior administrators informed the college community that the college is in debt, rather extreme debt. This is clearly evidenced by the lack of maintenance we see in our classrooms and buildings in general. A major problem our faculty and students face is the malfunctioning of the heating and ventilation system that is pumping excessive heat into many of our classrooms in Academic One and Two. And if you haven't experienced this, I encourage you to go visit those classrooms. Simply put, these conditions by no means make for a quality learning environment. By not fixing this issue, the college is demonstrating a complete disregard for the health of our students and college employees who must use these rooms, and also a lack of respect for us as well. Personally, I've made requests time and again for the heat to be adjusted in my classrooms, but these requests go unheeded, as I understand the problem is larger than just temperature fluctuations from one classroom to the next. I understand that the whole heating and cooling system, or perhaps large components of it, need to be replaced entirely. Dr. Wood made many promises to faculty at Faculty Senate meetings that the heating and ventilation system would be replaced, but it doesn't seem like that's going to be happening anytime soon, especially considering the college's financial situation. If the college cannot take care of the facilities that we already have, why would we begin this new culinary institute venture, which will cost the college $1.9 million just to start? First and foremost, the college has a responsibility to its students and its employees to create a safe and respectful environment for us to learn and work, and certainly before any new costly ventures are taken. Therefore, I implore you to vote down this resolution to begin work on a new culinary institute. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Baker.
Good evening. I just want to support my colleagues and voice some of my concerns in terms of the proposed NIAC Center. Number one, it's a fifteen-year contract for which we will be locked in. We cannot give it away. We have a sublet if we want to get out of it for whatever reason. Over the course of fifteen years, we'll be paying $9 million in rent. At a recent meeting that I attended over this issue, it was stated that the college expected an FTE count of eighty. Splitting that into two semesters of forty each, multiplying that by the credit hours, we would need twelve hundred credit hours a semester to support the program in Havestrop. For twelve hundred credit hours, we would have to run twenty-six point six-six sections of an average of fifteen students per section. We have three classrooms in NIAC. I don't know how we're going to have twenty-six classrooms to run the number of students that we need. We're going to be open, I think, seven days a week. We're going to need a full-time administrator. We're going to have more courses offered down there. We're going to have to increase the expenses for the additional faculty to teach those courses. The other concern that I have, because we can make numbers do whatever we want to do, is if students are taking courses in Havestrop, for example, which does not offer programs. It has the overflow of courses when we make campus, and we have courses down there that students can use to fulfill a program. If they take a three-credit course in Havestrop, the Havestrop Center gets credit for the tuition and the FTEs. If a student is taking a course at the Orangeburg Center, because they're in the motor program, and they're signed up for fifteen credits, three of which are auto-tech credits in Havestrop, the Havestrop, I'm sorry, in Orangeburg, the Orangeburg Center gets FTE credit for fifteen credits. So the twelve credits that are being taken on campus are attributed to Orangeburg as well. What I don't know is how that tuition is apportioned. Does the Orangeburg Center get all the tuition, or is that tuition split between the main campus for the twelve credits and the three credits on the Orangeburg campus? And if we do it that way, my concern is, are we giving the appearance of double tipping? Are we going to have shortfalls in the service areas because the money is going to be shown in the centers and not on the main campus? And to me, that's a concern. So I think that that should be considered before we really lock ourselves into a fifteen-year contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Josephine Coleman.
Good evening. I'm Josephine Coleman. I teach accounting here at the college, and I am a member of the Faculty Senate Executive Committee. And I'm here on behalf of this proposed plan, and I really am against it. I'm looking at the numbers. I see there's a lot of information. I think at this point in the life of our college, we really need to hold this thing down. I was asked to read something here, and it's coming from the Culinary Arts. Print's a little small, and I'm getting a little old, so I have to put the glasses on. I'm making this statement on behalf of the Hospitality, Culinary Arts, Travel and Tourism Department and program. While the concept and idea of a new state-of-the-art facility is extremely intriguing, exciting, the concept of creating a satellite campus for this purpose would not serve the program or the college well for the following reasons. Students would be isolated from the main campus and would not have the ability to access services such as tutoring, accessibility services, nor would they be able to join and participate in the clubs as well as campus activities on a daily basis. Transportation and logistics will become a major issue and will result in students missing classes, arriving late to classes or both. According to TOUR, transportation of Rockland, it takes them a minimum of sixty-plus minutes to get from the main campus to NIAC, with buses running one to two times at the most per hour and less frequently after 7:00 P.M. General education requirements, which at the present time amount to almost fifty percent of the AAS degree sheet, would be severely limited. Students would be limited to the offerings available at the NIAC Center. Many hospitality students work and need compressed streamlined schedules in order to accommodate their work schedules. Enrollment will decrease rather than increase, as we will not be serving a huge untapped market. Due to the challenging demographics in the county and surrounding areas, public high school enrollment is down and will continue for the foreseeable future. We need to focus on marketing to the underserved population as well as to adults who are changing careers due to job displacement, relocation, or other life changes. The main campus would serve all of these individuals well. It would be better to serve the college and the community if a renovated or new facility were to be built on the campus that would properly serve the needs of the students and the program. This should include a teaching kitchen, classroom, dining room, for a pop-up restaurant, and events with the possibility of a small market or bakery. Sounds good. We have existing space that could easily be reconfigured, or course discipline collaboration could continue to grow. Events such as the International Students Thanksgiving, which is written into the curriculum, could continue as well. Thank you for your time.
We already said everything it's going to say. That's it.
Can I just support my colleagues?
It was also Joe Peroni.
My name is Dr. Joe Peroni. I've been teaching at the college now for forty-six years. The last twenty-five years, I've been honored to teach in our honors program. I'm thrilled to see the kind of changes that have happened in the last hundred days, or whatever number of days, I guess it's more since Dr. Bastian has arrived. When he did arrive, I humorously said to him, "Dr. B, I don't know whether to think about you as the captain on the Titanic, or whether or not you're sully trying to make a heavy-duty landing." What I've certainly seen so far is the landing is going well, and hopefully, our ship will not sink. When I came here originally, Rockland Community College was called the gem of the county. You have in front of you a copy of something I threw together this morning. It's called Slamming on the Fiscal Brakes and Writing the Fiscal Titanic. The Middle States report reminded us of the awesome fiscal responsibility the Board of Trustees holds. Dr. Wood's administration's multiple fiscal follies have placed us all in a financial situation that is unsustainable. It is unsustainable. The fact that the press is now getting interested shows us how bad the lease deals and the proposed dorms are for our college. Leases in buildings will not reverse our multiple years of declining enrollment. They will not reverse it. When done wisely, they are a response to increasing enrollment and the need for new infrastructure. If you build it, they will come. Only works in the movies, and that's fantasy. I would need an hour to discuss whether dorms are an unwise idea, but I can talk about the lease issues more succinctly. The proposed NIAC site is going to be an additional cash drain at a time when the institution has enrollment problems, two labor contracts to negotiate, a badly botched TIA craft payment to correct, and who knows what else lurks in the hidden recesses of the morass that is under the leadership of our financial office. The Orangeburg site lease is problematic, incompetently structured, not a moneymaker, and is now in the press. We are now also leasing an extra floor at Havestrop that we can't populate with students. Clearly, the lease agreement for NIAC will necessitate a program of eighty to one hundred FTEs just to break even on the lease costs, omitting all the ancillary costs that attend a proposed program and the cost of outfitting the building. Can we really afford a third site that loses money? Wouldn't it be wiser to take these hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions over the life of the agreement, and use them to bring outside consultants to help us retool our recruitment and retention efforts? No FTEs, no money. Six or seven years of consistently declining enrollment tells us that the existing leadership doesn't have the answer, or they would have fixed it before President Bastian arrived. The VPs can point to demographics all they want, but real leadership would have found ways to staunch the wounds and increase or stabilize our enrollment instead of talking about how they maintained our percentage of decreasing high school graduating class. The county is changing, and our leadership approach to it hasn't changed accordingly. Perhaps it's time for new leadership. In any case, here's something we all must recognize. Somebody is gaining from these many spurious deals, but it certainly isn't the students who actually are the people for whom we work, or the fiscal fitness of the college. It's time to slam on the fiscal brakes and write the Titanic that was once the gem of the county. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have six resolutions tonight to discuss. We have gone over these during our workshop for a number of months, most of these resolutions. And we're going to do these under the consent agenda, which means that we're going to vote on them as one group. If any trustee wishes to vote on any one of these resolutions separately, we'll be happy to do that. Right now...
I've been given the controversy about some of these things. We might vote on item six on the consent agenda separately. That would be my suggestion.
Six is the Student Housing Association Operating Agreement?
No, it's the Hospitality and Culinary Arts Center.
That's number five. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Resolution number... I apologize. You're absolutely right. All right. So we will vote on resolution number six separately. The rest of the items on the consent agenda are as follows. Number one, the approval of the previous meeting minutes dated 11/1/2017. Item number two, the approval of the in-state tuition for students from Puerto Rico and the U.S. Virgin Islands displaced by hurricanes Maria and Irma. That's resolution forty-two thousand seventeen. Three is the approval of the CAC green roof replacement. This is resolution forty-one dash two thousand seventeen. Number four is the approval of the increase in cost for the demolition of the amphitheater and plaza restoration. This is resolution forty-two dash two thousand and seventeen. Number five, approval of the temporary boiler installation. Resolution forty-three, two thousand and seventeen. Number six, we will vote on separately. Number seven, approval to sign the RCC Student Housing Association LLC operating agreement. This is resolution forty-five, two thousand and seventeen. Can I have a motion to approve those six items? Okay, we have Mendel. Second? Okay, any questions, comments? All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to vote on item number six, which is resolution to approve, approval to enter into a leasing agreement for the establishment of the RCC Hospitality and Culinary Arts Center at NIAC. This is resolution forty-four dash two thousand and seventeen. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Jill Rehn. Have a second? All right. Any questions, comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Based on the comments, I would like to ask some more discussions about, particularly with the faculty not having a chance to have a conversation about this, I think it would be a good experience based on the conversation.
I would say to you that most of those questions that they had, we have discussed. We have discussed almost everything that they raised. They seem not to have been included in this conversation. Can we table it for a month? We table it for a month. We have a construction issue getting opened on time. Any other comments?
I would make this comment that I think the statements from the members of the faculty were, their concerns were well-stated, and I share many of them. I'm grateful for them bringing them to our attention. I wish some of the, there was this much concern at this depth of a level. There was something that would have been raised earlier. My position on this, I would vote for a resolution for this reason, that we have engaged in the leadership of the college. I think that Dr. Bastian came in with no sacred cows, and came in without looking at this as the fact that this was something that was put in place by a prior administration. I don't think he felt obligated to continue with it, that he had anything vested in it. I think he looked at it with clear eyes. I think the lessons of what happened at the Motor Center, I think he was well-aware of those as he negotiated this lease. I know this lease has been through a severe vetting on its particulars, and I also believe that I trust his judgment that even with all the concerns that have been raised, that he believes that this can work. And so, having just gone through the process, the search process, and finding Dr. Bastian, and then going through the process of selecting him to be the next leader of the institution, I think that given that this is the first major initiative that he has proposed to us, that he wants to pursue, and he believes that he can make it work, and I have faith in him to do it. And so, I would urge the board, notwithstanding the well-stated concerns and the legitimate, sincere expressions that were made by the members of the faculty that I respect immensely, I would vote very cautiously and with great hope and optimism for the resolution, with the anticipation that Dr. Bastian will, being aware of all of these matters, will nevertheless manage to avoid the iceberg that he alluded to.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'd just like to say myself also, and I've been involved with this project for a long, long time, and this could have been voted on months ago. When Dr. Bastian got here, we put an immediate hold on it, an immediate hold, until we got more financial information, until we vetted the lease. The lease had been vetted by attorneys. The presentation that was given to all the people in the governance showed how very conservative that presentation was financially, extremely conservative. I traveled up to the Culinary Arts Facility in the Ethic in New York, with a whole group of people from the college, and it was an incredible facility, and I think this facility, there's no place better than NIAC for it. We've gotten some support from Elizabeth Kendall, donations, grants from some of the politicians who also think this is ideal for Rockland County and the state. I would vote for it. I think Dr. Bastian's done his due diligence on this, and I think he screwed it to us. And like I said, we have discussed almost every issue that all of you raised in detail in our meetings. We really have. So I'm all for it. I will say that if any of you feel like you're not informed properly, we would have to hold on it for tonight, but I think it's good to go. Any other comments?
I would only add that I think that, again, I think Dr. Bastian's done a great job in terms of getting it out very thoroughly. There's no question about that in my mind. Whether or not the prior administration did its equal job with the faculty, I don't know to answer that question, but I know that Dr. Bastian has looked at this very thoroughly, has looked at it very closely, and I highly support Dr. Bastian's position in this.
I also have a comment. I also understand exactly what you're saying, and also, I was asking the same questions right on up to last week and into this week, and had a very open and honest discussion with Dr. Bastian. He has no skin in this game. He came in, and he really could have gotten rid of this immediately. Show the numbers. I understand your concerns about the FTEs. We are getting grants. I mean, I think the biggest problem has been the past several years, and I do have to admit this, that I just don't think there's a lot of communication, either where that's lacking or how that's happening, where we're not really able to sit down and really look at the numbers, and there's some type of a, I don't know, a cliff or something between us. But I'm going to vote yes for it tonight, based on Dr. Bastian really going through this, and he puts his soul into this the past several months. I just want to tell you that he's really been researching this, and as have we, and I think it's a good idea. I'm scared, but I think it's really great. I think it's going to be a great thing for our college.
Kendall.
I have nothing more to add. I was sitting here several months ago, and Dr. Wood was still here. I remember we put an hold on it because, for those reasons, because we wanted to do our due diligence, and I've been here for the past few months going through all those funny details, so I think we've done our due diligence kind of.
Richard.
I'm going to abstain, given the faculty problems with this. I don't want to really oppose it, but I'm uneasy inside. So we call for a vote on the abstain.
I've been here through these months and months of discussion, and certainly some of the impact there as well, because you're doing ten feet spread. It's been on for a long time.
I'm just going to go back to that first question. I believe that all you knew was that we're going to talk about the local president.
Jimmy.
This isn't, we just can't hear anything.
Okay, sorry.
I agree. This has been brought up in a lot of meetings, and we just don't always open, telling people that we're fully about the challenges and the issues.
I want to kind of off that pedal when I said I'm scared. I'm not scared. I'm actually kind of excited. It's really, we should move forward with something, and we really don't want to research on this.
Okay. I would like to motion, I would like to motion to approve the resolution. We already didn't move on, we started with discussion. Okay. Call a roll. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Okay. The motion carries. Thank you.
Two seconds.
That was Fatima.
Fatima. Okay.
Marty, can I just, as a postscript to that, that I do want to thank the members of the faculty for coming out and expressing those concerns, in the manner, not only for the fact that they expressed them, but in the manner in which they expressed them, because I thought that it went to construct discussion, and it was good to hear and get those concerns on the record that they, I was glad that they did, and I thank them for that. And I'd like to, as a secondary issue, Dr. Bastian, can we by next month have a report on what's going on with the heating? Because I was particularly concerned about that, particularly. That was the one substantive issue that was raised, that there are maintenance issues... That was the one substantive issue that was raised, that there are maintenance issues that we've got to make sure we're addressing, and that's something that has been that prominent a problem, making we can get something done. It's, we're moving into the period of the year when the heat is going to be an important thing, so maybe next month we can have something back on that.
I have one comment also, and just like to say, I, I think that if we air here and it's not involving you soon enough in this discussion, and I apologize for that. I can't say Dr. Bastin was the one who was getting you involved. Again, we really needed to do that much earlier, so he knew the answers to some of these questions. That I apologize for, and I think in the future we'd better do it better than we did. I do want to say to my friends and colleagues that as we move forward, we do want to work much more in the way of partnering at the beginning of these kinds of efforts versus the conversations really coming to the nitty gritties at the end, quite frankly. One of the reasons why I wanted to have the governance meeting, the leaders of governance to hear the details, was because I was not aware that you all were not a part of all of the substantive planning moving forward. I was not aware of that. When I became aware of it, that's why I had the meeting to kind of bring them in. I appreciate the concerns expressed, and as we begin to move the project forward, we want you to be a partner with us in helping to make it what it needs to be. So, that will be the way in which I work with you. I'm hopeful that you're experiencing collaboration and openness and transparency from us in ways that I hope will continue to get better. We've got to be partners if we're going to move our college forward, and so I appreciate the support of the board tonight, but more importantly, you know, we want to work closer together as we roll this out and all the other things as well. What if it's going to be, I know that Vice President Nia will probably mention that in his report in a moment, but it is something that, you know, would be answered. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Dear, academic affairs.
Before you begin, Dr. Dear, Marty, as chair, now that you're at NIAAC, this part of this event. Can we say why? Do you have a why?
Yeah, I will. Okay.
I would just like to add something to the comments that were made about the faculty being here, and that is that what I saw tonight was a very open and honest sense from the faculty, as opposed to a volatile present, presentation. I thought it was a lot of concern, and really, I felt there were really important concerns that were, you know, brought forward. And I have been in the same vote also as you in terms of finding out information at the last minute. But I would like to say to you today that our new president is one of the most collaborative human beings I've ever met, and I think the fact that he stopped this process and involved you is critical. But that was in the middle, and I think as we move forward, you're going to find that you are going to be part of a really fantastic team because of Dr. Bastin. I appreciate that. So having said that, just a couple of things. You have my written report for Joe Falco, coordinator of the Two on One Center, presented to the SUNY Board of Trustees and the SUNY Chancellor on Tuesday, November fourth. And it was at that meeting that he was also asked by Dr. Graham, who is the Associate Provost for Student Affairs and University Life within SUNY, to use our Two on One Center at Rockland Community College as a model for the SUNY Community College, especially in some of the things that we're doing with our food pantry and for our food and secure students. So, kudos to the Two on One Center in Rockland Community College. The other thing is that three of our faculty members under the leadership of our Division Chair Martha Rotman, Dr. Katie Lynch, Stephen Burke, and Talia Lipton, delivered a presentation to the Capella University Community College Advisory Board on Open Educational Resources. And what's significant about the presentation, besides the fact that it was outstanding, is the fact that Capella University, that Advisory Council, has members from all over the country. So not only are we going to be leaders within SUNY, we're also getting out across the country. And I'd like to share at a future date, have them come and present that to you, because it was a really outstanding presentation. The other thing is the entire campus community has been invited to a guided pathway seminar on December eighth, co-hosted by the New York State Student Success Center, a member of the JFF, Jobs for the Future Student Success Center Network, and State University of New York, featuring Dr. Rob Johnstone, a national leader in community college redesign efforts that lead to greater student retention and higher graduation rates, student success. The purpose for us during that day and futuristically is to explore the potential for a guided ways pathway model so that we can increase student success. I'm very excited about that, because we, right now, we have about seventy people attending both sessions. We also are fortunate to have Dr. Gretchen Schmidt, who's another JFF member. She's a director for JFF's Post-Secondary State Policy Team, who will be with us during the day as well, and will talk to us about policy and how some of our policies can either enhance or impede student success. So I'm looking forward to a very exciting day, and I know many of you have enrolled and we've invited to the board to a breakfast at eight to talk in the morning to talk and discuss some things with Dr. Johnstone and Dr. Schmidt. That's my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Dear.
Thank you.
Vice President Dana Stille.
Good evening. You have my written report. I would just like to highlight two items. We are very proud to have been awarded a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar SUNY Performance Improvement Fund grant, which will advance the development of a centralized applied learning office to support our students. Irene Deutsch, who is the Director of Student Career Services, will lead the implementation of that project. I also want to just highlight the progress that we are making with enhancing the partnerships that we have with our local four-year institutions. And most recently, I have been involved in meetings with Ramapo College and Mercy College, and these enhanced partnerships will increase our transfer options, increase our potentials pool, increase our pool of potential students with the creation of conditional acceptance memorandum of understandings, and also will provide us with much-needed academic advisor support. So we look forward to building upon these relationships as we move forward. And that is my report. Any questions?
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Stille. Dr. Nayer Nussein.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I would like to address the heating and cooling briefly today, but I am, I can't bring a more formal presentation next month as requested by Mr. Joe Rand. So what we are in the process of doing is we have entered into an energy performance contract, which will allow us to get rid of old boilers and chilis, install new ones, complete renovation, including lighting and delivery of heat and cooling across the campus. That is a very comprehensive project, and it is in the process of getting started. And as soon as I have the schedule, I can furnish that to not only the board, but also to the rest of the campus, so they will know exactly how each activity will proceed as we move into this, move into this project. The other thing I want to mention is that last, this past Tuesday, the Rockland County Legislature discussed the capital budget for two thousand and eighteen, and there are three projects that they have approved that will involve the college. One is they have approved increased funding from one point eight to two point, to four million for the replacement, complete replacement of the roof in the fieldhouse and the PE building. That project is underway, and the funding, extra funding was needed to make sure that the job was completed. The second project that has been approved by the county is a complete renovation of the swimming pool, which is badly heated. And the third project that they have approved is to allocate one point five billion dollars to completely renovate the water main system in campus. Some of you, I'm sure, are aware that, I think, within the last year, there were three times when there was a water main break across the campus, and that can be very disruptive. So this will allow us to hopefully fix that, that problem. But like I said, I'll have a more formal presentation for next month's meeting. If there are any questions?
One question. Will SUNY be given any support for those boilers?
SUNY will not be given a support for that. We are going to, it'll be self-funded. So the project brings in guaranteed savings in energy costs and heating and cooling, like gas and oil consumption, and then we should pay for the project.
Thank you, Dr. Nussein.
Just to say that all of you in the front row here are now signed up for our dog ball team. I want to thank you for that. So just beyond my report, I am looking to, I have met with the Alumni Association Board, and we're looking to develop ancillary alumni groups. So Kathy Hopkins came and presented to the Alumni Association later, earlier this week, and we're looking to develop ancillary Alumni Association Boards for different groups. So nursing has, I express an interest, so I'd like to extend that to the campus. And if you're interested in a science group, alumni group, come and speak to me, and we will work something out. But we think it's a way for us to expand alumni participation on campus. Thank you for joining the team.
Thank you.
I'm sitting here.
Board Secretary report.
He set up the whole dance, the entrance.
Nicet, Ms. Stone?
Only that the Foundation Board of Nicet has been...
Reactivated.
Reactivated, thank you. And the purpose of that is to be able to raise money for Nicet, and that money will then be used for board education, for trustees throughout the state.
Anything else? Okay. Student Government report.
Just following up with last month's concerns, I spoke to Bill Rieckey about our security issues, and we agreed that starting next semester, we're going to be having emergency training, and evacuation, you know, at the beginning of the semester, so that the campus is prepared in case of emergency. I discussed with Dean Boykin about the technology in classrooms and the nursing office, and we've been working very hard to secure those things. And also, we are looking for another blood drive donor company, but that's still being worked out.
Any questions? Thank you. All the new business. I have one announcement. I want to congratulate Iliana Eckert, trustee Iliana Eckert, on receiving the Rockland County YMCA Service to Youth Award, being given tonight at a dinner at the NIAAC Seaport. That's why Joe Rand left early. He is actually going to be, I think, one of the presenters tonight. So congratulations to Iliana Eckert. Is there anything else? Any old new business? Not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.